Good evening, I'd like to call the board of the June 6, 2019 Bowling Green County Council meeting. Valerie, you may want to get your phone in. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
(Crosstalk).
Okay. We do have a forum, and we have to announce that Ms. Coles will be joining us via phone and in. Valerie, could you state where you currently are and the reason that you have to participate via the phone for the minutes?
Look, this is Valerie Coles, I am in Tennessee and I am on vacation.
Is there a motion to approve Valerie participating? Okay. Have a motion by Mr. McDermott, is there a second? Second by Mr. Ray. Any further discussion? All in favor, read the word. Motion passed. Okay. First item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding the tax and utility rates for 2019, 2020. If there's anyone here that would like to address counsel on this matter, we'll open the public hearing here in just a second, and just a reminder that you have three minutes to speak on the topic. So come to the podium, state your name and address, and get that started. Just a background on this topic, the proposed taxes and rates include an increase of roughly 2% in the waste collection fee and a 10% increase in the... The brief history on the 2% in the waste collection, we're in the last year of our contract with Waste Management, and maybe we have an escalator built into the contract, 2% increase. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the tax and utility rates for Second call. Last and final call. This time, the public hearing is closed. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing regarding ordinance O. 2019-003 in regards to our commercial water rates. This amends the Bowling Green County Code, Chapter 5, Public Facilities, Article 1, Public Utilities, Division 2, Water Regulations, Rates and Billing Section 5-177. Ordinance Number O. 2019-003 changes the manner in which commercial water rate users' rates are set by allowing commercial facilities or share common bathroom facilities to be charged as one of them. At this time, the same rules apply as the first public hearing. Open that public hearing at this time.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council and staff. My name is Mark Bassoon, and obviously I live in the town, I own some commercial property in town, and I would like to ask council to consider passing this language in this ordinance. As a property owner trying to keep these buildings filled, this would help greatly. In the grand scheme, fifty to sixty dollars every two months may not sound a lot, but when you're trying to keep businesses going and these fees have to be passed on to three or four different people that only has one meter service in the building, and there are only minimum bills to be given, it would be greatly appreciated if you all consider ending this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address counsel on this matter? Last and final call. The public hearing for the ordinance O. 2019-003 is closed at this time. Counsel, is there a motion to approve this ordinance?
I have a motion.
At this time, we have a motion to approve ordinance as written. Okay, we have a second by Mr. McDermott, further discussion? Okay, at this time, we'll have a roll call vote.
Yes.
Okay. Valerie?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Are you going to go back to the first public hearing? It had the tax ordinance, public hearing, was public hearing. Ordinance Number 2.
Okay. We can, yeah, we can address that at this time also if you'd like to... Is that under tab 1? Sorry. Okay, counsel, we have, is there a motion to approve ordinance Number O. 2019-2 in regards to the set of tax?
I make a motion to, excuse me, to accept the tax retention rate for the, for the year 2019, 2020 as written. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
A second by Mr. McDermott. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I, I'm somewhat opposed to the 15% increase in the tax, because it's going to raise about thirty-five thousand dollars per revenue for the town, because it's very costly. So, I understand that the 2000s, the, so, my funding may approach to make that 15% increase.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes, sir, I like, we, this is one thing that we need to do, this hasn't been done in the past, the rates, our system is deteriorating rapidly, our pipes in the road are having to be repaired constantly, we don't get the funding to do it, who knows when we're going to be in five years as far as water. And, and this probably won't be the last time we have to raise them up. Need to start getting up to where we can receive grants from the USDA to even help us to fix our water lines. If we don't, then we'll be looking upon ourselves, pulled out of our bank to pay for. We got the sewer line done because last year we raised our rates, we came above their threshold to where they're like, you're now trying to help yourself, but we'll try to help you. We don't do that with our water system, and I know it's a burden on people, but it hasn't been done in the past. Look around, other counties are higher than what we are. Go to King George's, try to pay their rates, they're even higher. But we've got to start helping ourselves, or we're not going to be able to afford to fix them when they do go down.
Thank you. Further discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes, yes, no.
Thank you, Valerie.
Uh, no.
Okay. We have three noes and four yeses, so the motion passes. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, hearing in regards to White Street one-way proposal. The background on this, the attached memorandum responds to a request from the Frederickburg Residency to review Route 1215, White Street in Bowling Green, to determine whether the two-way street can be converted to a one-way street. The residency plans to present the sketch to the town of Bowling Green for discussion afterward. For anyone not familiar with the project, White Street and Anderson kind of almost line up, and the proposal is to turn White Street one-way to help prevent the cut-through traffic to miss light at Milford Street. There are a few residents on White Street that will be inconvenienced, but it's a proposal to help try to cut down on the traffic on Maury Avenue for, as a cut-through road versus the residence. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Just a reminder, I think we're already going to be here for this discussion, so we have a three-minute timeframe. Come to the podium, state your name, address, and have your moment to speak. The public hearing is open at this time.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff, buddy. My name is Lynn Lenahan, I am a Realtor, and I live on Maury Avenue, 120. We also own a property at 127 Maury Avenue. When we moved here into Bowling Green approximately 24 years ago, the problem of speeding on Maury Avenue was present tremendously. And I understand before that, it was bad. I had a dog that was killed on Maury Avenue by the mailbox. I'm a Realtor, and I warn, I love our to, our town, but I warn anyone who is going to live on Maury Avenue to love our town, but please keep your pets and your children away from the road, that the speeding is just out of control. Many of us, I went yesterday, I went from the top of the street all the way up to the stop sign, and back up the other side, and received forty signatures of homeowners, and what we are asking for, and this is what it says, and I'll be happy to give you copies, I have copies. "I am a resident on Maury Avenue, the speeding problem is a huge issue, I am in favor of having speed tables installed at any point on Maury Avenue, including in front of my house. The residents of Maury Avenue have been trying to have speed-reducing measures taken, installed in excess of thirty years, to no avail. This must be done for the safety of all who enjoy our town." In addition to those that signed that live on Maury Avenue, and I heard their stories as I went about, their concern for their children and their pets, and their enjoyment of being able to walk, and we've got walking that we encourage here, and it's just unsafe. People get, almost run over, it's unsafe. I did get a couple of people on here that walk, who said, "I want to sign this," and I have their signatures. It is unsafe. Making it one-way, does, we discussed this when I was going around, they don't see a help to that. It may decrease some of the traffic, but it is not going to stop people from speeding. Our law enforcement has been there, has been ramping things up of late, because we've had discussion or posts on social media. We appreciate them being there, and of course, that helps when they're there, but they cannot be there all the time. Speeding and excess happens every single day, and I don't mean thirty or thirty-five. I mean like fifty. It's really bad. So I have, I'm going to send these over here, signatures that I have, and I appreciate your consideration and all that you're trying to do, and I hope that we don't sweep this under the rug. Thank you. Any questions?
No.
I also put, there are copies on the back of heights, who is where, in case you can't read their signatures.
Okay, thank you.
On Maury, we understand the problem. I concern personally across the street, all the people who are being dehabilitated, there's a lot of foot traffic, walking, fifty miles an hour is outlawed. I sat out on my porch last week, just watch, and I'm pretty sure I'm good at judging speed, and doing it within about five miles. And I averaged it about between thirty-five and forty miles an hour. I spent a half an hour in the bottom of the car. There are definitely times of the day worse, better. Bottom line is, ninety-nine percent of these people are either town residents or county residents. It's not like somebody's coming from the outside and running down these roads. These are the cut through. And definitely, there's a problem.
Michael Lenahan, then his husband, making White Street one-way. People will just speed the other way. They, they might not speed one way, but they go to speed the other. We've been up here, several people that are here already, have been up here years ago, have been solved. Never been solved, never been solved. The only, the only thing you could do on White Street would be to close White Street at Maury, that affects it. But I understand that that's really not an option, because you have to make the cul-de-sac, that could create property, it's not an option. But making it one-way is not, is not going to solve the problem. Speed tables, speed tables would probably solve it. As far as noise, I understand that people said that residents would complain about noise. All of the folks were asked if they would complain about noise, and, oh, nobody worried about the noise. Somehow, we've got to solve this now. This has been a problem since Kathy Hancock, John Wayne, that's a good manager, before I was there. Thanks again for your time.
Hi, I'm Trish Sheehan, at 137 Maury. Years ago, we tried to address another issue of 4A, we said, there are not sidewalks. Sidewalk here, sidewalk there, basically, walk up and down our street, you were walking the street the most. I say that it is unsafe, and it's something. Looking better than what's suggested. I'm more than happy if, the noise of the tide pulling over that, be so much better than the noise of cars speeding up and down, you having to watch where you're at, jump in some of your, some racing, to get back through line, get back home from through line. So we'd really appreciate it, instead of doing something.
While we wait, Mr. Beal, come up, I just, I just want to make a note of this. We don't expect this to solve the problem, but we do, we are trying to make an effort to contain the problem, because we are open to any suggestions to beat out the problems to be resolved.
Well, good evening, everybody, I'm Mary James, lifelong resident of Bowling Green, now I live outside of town limits. But I am interested in what happens on Maury Avenue. I frequently walk, fitness-walking around town, and Maury Avenue is very dangerous. There's not enough room there for people to park off the street unless they're on the sidewalk. And Trish was right, people do have to walk in the street. Making White Street one-way, you know, there's another street at the end, Elliot Street, people could just zoom down there, cut through and come back. So I don't see how doing anything with White Street is going to stop the speeding problem. People are going to want to use Maury Avenue for a cut-through. It is parallel to Milford Street and 207, and it's a very convenient way to cut through, but it's, it's definitely unsafe, and there's nothing there to slow people down, and I've seen a lot of speeding too. And another issue is, the street is so narrow that with the trash cans on Thursdays, people parking on the street, if you meet another car, you have to stop. It's almost like a one-lane road. So I think a lot could be done to improve Maury Avenue, and I like the idea of the, are they speed bumps that they're talking about?
Speed tables.
A speed table?
With water and...
It's more of a, a gentle bump. I like that idea. I think that would work to slow people down. I don't think you're going to decrease the amount of traffic cutting through by doing something to White Street. So that's my two cents on it.
Good evening, I'm Jean Young, I live on Maury Avenue, very close to the stop sign on Main Street. I've lived there for sixteen years. The speed on Maury Avenue has been a constant concern. It amazes me that after someone turns from Main Street on to Maury Avenue, that within two houses, they can be going forty, forty-five miles an hour, and then it just goes up one more. Just last week, a neighbor was slowly backing out of his driveway, a speeder was coming towards Main Street, the speeder almost hit the car backing up, swerved greatly to try to miss. I would just very much appreciate anything that council can do to help us.
Sorry.
And I'm very much in favor of the speed tables as well. I don't think that making White Street one-way is going to cut down the speed. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Steven Briggs, I live at 130 Maury, first, this site, I'm actually on another issue, but I can't speak on this. I don't feel like White Street is going to hurt anything, it'd probably benefit to reduce traffic a little bit, but the speed is definitely an issue, rest of the speed tables, we're making it one-way.
And just, just for the record, I, I had a phone call this evening from Sterling Schoonover, he owns a property at the corner of White and Milford Street, and the driveway is off White Street, and just for the record, he's opposed to the one-way also.
My name is Jolissa Jordan, I am not a resident of Bowling Green, however, I am speaking on behalf of David Stork, who is a resident at 115 Maury Avenue. Mr. Mayor, members of town council and staff, good evening, and thank you for allowing my comment to be read into the record in my absence. Unfortunately, I am away at business, at a business conference, or I would have been with you to deliver this opinion in person. Thank you for considering options to make Maury Avenue a better neighborhood to live and raise our families. As most of you will remember, during my first term on council, we received numerous complaints and much public comment regarding the amount of traffic and the speed of that traffic on Maury Avenue. At that time, I resided at 255 Milford Street, and I had to rely on citizen comments, VDOT speed tests, and traffic counts to understand and try to appreciate the Maury Avenue citizens' concerns. I remember the speed tests showed the average speed was only a little over the posted twenty-five miles per hour limit. I also remember the traffic counts being high, but not as high as citizens expected, suspected. About six years ago, my family moved to 115 Maury Avenue. I can tell you that there's a significant issue and reason for concern with the volume and speed of traffic on Maury Avenue. The vast majority, majority of traffic on Maury Avenue is not its residents, but individuals that are coming into town from 301 South, and they are heading to Food Line Shopping Center. They think that by taking Maury Avenue to White Street will quicken their trip by avoiding the traffic light at Milford and Main. We all know that Maury Avenue is a VDOT-designated secondary road, and will never be improved as far as width for curb and gutter. And I don't think any resident should want it to be, as it would, as it would take a substantial amount of our front yards and basically put our front doorsteps on the street. The streets are so narrow that two cars can barely pass each other when there's no, when there are no cars parked in front of their homes. Several homes do not have driveways and must rely on street parking. Also, the utility poles are dangerously close to asphalt as well. The only solution is to reduce the amount of traffic on Maury Avenue. It is only designated, it is only designed for residential traffic and not cut-through traffic. I don't think limiting White Street to one-way will accomplish this. I ask you to direct VDOT to temporarily close one end of White Street as a test. At the intersection of White and Maury, three concrete jersey barriers could be put in place, thereby making White a dead-end street. This would put a stop to the cut-through problem traffic and allow the town and its residents to test this theory. Thank you, David Stork.
Is there anyone else that like to, would like to address counsel on this matter? Second call. Last and final call. Okay, we'll close the public hearing in regards to White Street one-way proposal.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we table this matter until we can get better results from VDOT, give them time to test things out, and then which we can then bring it back at later date, you know, when, you know, when VDOT can come up some type of solution.
Okay. Yeah, I had a, I had a conversation with Mr. Beal from VDOT before the meeting, and kind of briefed him on the speed table that we had talked about this weekend, and he's going to go back and look at what we can do as far as that goes on the speed tables, and then can you see if, if VDOT would entertain closing White Street at Maury, to try it as a test? I mean, I don't know what VDOT's stance is on that, but...
Yeah, we, we haven't considered previously, we can look at doing that, oh, the, the issue there was at the public hearing today, make White Street one-way, is really just a, um, it's not a traffic calming measure, but I felt that a change in the operation of White Street...
By reducing the traffic on White Street, also reduce the traffic, at least coming in one direction from the Food Line, not to the Food Line, even just based on my own drive-by, I would go down to White at Main Street instead of Maury. Um... Was it really just an operational change?
It's really just an operational change, it's not a traffic calming measure. I sent the traffic calming guide to the town council, to begin the traffic calming measure, you have to have an established problem, which we would have to measure with radar, but we'd look for eighty-fifth percentile speed being ten miles an hour or more than the posted speed, which would be thirty, thirty-five is what we're looking for. And that's what we did on Main Street, and that's how we justified allowing the, the pole-mounted speed display signs. And I know also, later in your agenda, you're going to talk about the, the additional fines, two-hundred-dollar additional fines on Main Street, and we can allow that because we've documented that there's a speeding problem through a traffic study. And then, once we document that there's a problem, we open the, open the discussion up to how to fix it, what's the best measure? So in that traffic calming guide, there are maybe a dozen different measures to slow traffic, one of which is a speed hump. There are also, you know, all of them comes with pluses and minuses, I mean, you just have to weigh the situation and, and figure out which one's the best, they all come with the costs. They all come with a cost. The cost is borne by the locality. So you'd be paying for these measures if they were warranted. Half the residents, which maybe it's not gonna be an issue, have to agree to the measures. And then for some of the devices, like a speed hump, the neighbors who get those placed in front of their houses have to agree to them as well. So we can start that discussion, and we can go through it again. I guess you've gone through it several times before. I have been part of those discussions. But it just felt like this operational change was an opportunity to reduce the number of vehicles and thereby maybe reducing a few of the speeding vehicles coming through there. But again, there was no push from VDOT to make this change. It was just a suggestion for consideration, so it's completely up to the town.
I guess I'm a little bit confused, because have you not been informed of how many times you've had this discussion?
No, I'm aware of it.
Yeah. And I feel like we're getting a pushback from all this. I think we have a stronghold. We've already had some reports done. We had one done recently, and maybe we're not firewood, like thinking we need to start from scratch again. That's...
The previous, the previous speed studies didn't show an issue. The VDOT speed studies. That's why we kind of have to...
Did you not know that? They did already decide there was an issue?
No, I think they decided there was not an issue.
It was not an issue. Can you explain a little bit about the study?
How many years ago was that? And what was it? When was that similar?
I don't know. I think David Stork's comments, it was when he was mayor.
It was less than six years ago. Mr. Beal, can you explain that process? Talk about it.
85th percentile.
Explain that a little bit to us, please.
I'm not a statistician. It's higher than the average. So it's higher than the average speed, 85th percentile.
So basically, when they do the speed study, and they study the average, speed has to be shown at 35 miles per hour or greater is the average.
No, it's the 85th percentile, not the average.
85% of the speed, where speeding has to be going over 35.
Yeah. And that's where we run into the issue in the previous studies, is it's not showing that.
Where they put the monitor was not at a place where people have actually started to really gain speed. It was when they first turned off of White, and that's where it was. It's like, yeah, get down that dip, and then they really start getting speed up into the neighborhood. That's where it needs to be placed.
Or they're slowing down. They're coming from Main Street, going to White. If they're slowing down, so they can make the turn. So that doesn't matter. If they're coming from White Street, they were right there coming off, and they haven't had a chance to gain speed yet. I mean, they...
When we do the study this time, I'll just ask for the town and tell us where you want to put it. Sounds good?
Can you put it in one spot?
Yeah.
Sure.
How long will this take? Because I feel like we need to be careful. That's so long on this, that we need some kind of deadlines. Because I feel like my community has supported Maury Avenue tonight, and so has the town. We've heard this for so many years. I'm not gonna be very happy leaving here without knowing that we're gonna crunch this again, and we're gonna have some solid answers one way or the other.
I can't promise you a deadline tonight. It'll be handled by our traffic engineering section. And I don't know what other commitments to have, but we will do it shortly. We don't own the roads. It affects the operation of the road.
Would VDOT consider a study that was run by residents?
It'll be, the study's gonna be commissioned by the town, so...
This is Valerie. I'd like to say something.
Okay.
As a resident of Maury Avenue, and I don't want to sound biased, because I am a town council member, but I would rather not see this table, because I will agree with everyone who has spoken. This has gone on for long enough. Several years ago, when they did the study, they opted to put the 25 mile an hour signs, because there were residents at the time that did not want speed bumps. So thank you very much, Lynn, for doing all the legwork to get the petitions and people who are not opposed to that. I just think the law will be tabled. It's been going on. The tabling of it is just putting a dog in the house. You need to get this done, and let's take care of this before something happens to a two new home being built. We don't know who's moving in there. Let's just take care of it. Thank you.
Okay. Valerie, just a clarification. We're not tabling, doing the speed study or directing VDOT. We're just tabling the potential of closing White Street for one-way traffic. This is clear?
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you for all that, thank you.
And just to make the citizens aware, I'll let Andrea address a few legal issues that we may have also to issue.
So Virginia is what they call a Dillon Rule state, and Mr. Seeley has heard this before. That means that local governments only have the authority that they are given by the General Assembly. So we have to find a place in the state code where it says that the town council can do A, B, or C. In the state code, when it talks about restricting the speed, we have to rely on what VDOT will allow us to do. It does not give us an option to just go off on it, do what we want to, to go through VDOT to coordinate that.
Okay, so at this point, we'll get together on getting the speed. You'll let us know when the speed study, we can set that up. Reevaluate White Street. But we won't do anything on White Street at this time. With the exception of maybe explore the option of closing it one way. If VDOT would like to try that at the Maury White Street demonstration.
Yes, you wouldn't be able to do that.
Jersey was?
Yeah, we wouldn't just close the street without appropriate turnaround or V-TOR or signage or another public hearing of the town council asking us to do it. Okay. The town has to commission the speed study. So you can pay VDOT to do it, you can hire an engineer to do it, but there's a funding, there's a cost that comes along with it.
Okay, I have an idea what that cost is?
I'll get you a number.
Okay. Thank you, David. Next lady on the agenda.
Mayor, we got a motion on the table.
We have a motion to table the White Street one-way proposal. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion on the White Street one-way proposal? Here none? All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, all opposed, table it. Valerie?
Yes.
You're in favor of, you're voting no? To table it?
You're voting, you're changing for discussion on White Street for another time?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so we had two, four yeses, two noes, and one of... You're saying? Okay, you voted yes. Okay. We have five yeses, two noes. Okay. Would council like to make a motion that we add White Street one-way proposal to the agenda for our July meeting, so it doesn't get lost? Okay, we have a motion by Ms. McDeerman. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'd also like to make a motion that we commission the study, have VDOT commission for us the speed on Maury Street.
Okay. So just so I'm clear, you want VDOT to do the study, we don't go with the private consultant? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's a good, that's a good question. I'm open to either way. If we can get it done quicker and just effective, would VDOT accept the study? We happen to have qualifications. Person get the study.
Signed and sealed by professional engineer will accept it.
Do you all provide a list of those consultants touching it? Or we'd have to find them on our own?
I could give you a list.
Okay, thank you.
Then I'll commission a study as soon as possible for submission to VDOT.
Okay, we have a motion to commission a speed study for Maury Avenue. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Howard. Any further discussion?
No. This, this study is just to take a look at the speed, just take a look at the study and see who we can get to do it. It's not committing to doing it no matter what the price is. It's just commissioning out, check it out, and see what we're looking at, what we're up against, and what the price is, correct?
No.
Or is this doing the study itself?
This is doing the study and...
Press to commission someone to do this anyway.
Correct.
And to reassure you, I feel like we're some of the engineers in our community that we can picture this.
That's fine. I'm just wanting clarification.
Any other discussion?
Should we also still continue to look at, sorry, say?
The traffic tables will come after the speed study once.
Just don't let that get lost.
Yeah. No, I had a very good discussion about the speed tables, so that won't get lost. If we document that we have a speeding problem, speed tables will be one of the calls, will be one of the first calls. Okay? All in favor of commissioning a study to study the speeding issues on Maury Avenue? All in favor, raise your right hand. Valerie?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passed. Thank you to all the residents for coming out and sharing your opinions. I know this incident, or this moment, we all do know we have a problem, but there are a lot of issues that go on in town that nobody does. They'll complain about it behind closed doors, but they never bring it to the forefront of council. And I can tell you that we will work to solve issues if we know about these issues. So I appreciate y'all taking time, coming out, letting us know that we do have an issue. And I ask that you do that on any issue that you see in town. We all love this town and we want the best for the town. I assure you that if there's an issue, we can fix it. So with that being said, we'll move on. We had no delegations on our agenda. We have a public comments section that I'd like to open at this time, and we'll start with Mr. Seeley and Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, and staff. For those of you, I've seen probably everybody in council got a copy of the Cardinal report that came out, a lot of good suggestions. I think what we should do is get some folks together, Eric Macanam, myself, the mayor, the probably head of the EDA, the Main Street group, and talk about some of the suggestions in here. I think there are some things we can all work through to try to make some of this come to fruition. I've also brought Gary Wilson. There was a cup, there was one issue in here in particular that I think we may be able to help with, and Gary will better articulate it than I can.
I don't think that necessarily is true, but I could try. What we're talking about is Northview, one of the recommendations, character study, potentially determine marketable.
Sir, I'm sorry, I didn't understand what company you're talking about.
It's Northview is 301, across from Milford Field. One of your marketable opportunities. So one of the things we wanted to tell is material progress. At that point, we have entered it into a program of state that has ongoing to do character studies for property, no charge. And so they will do the script study free, and after that, again, the script needs to be done. So material progress, some of the points are being, something.
Thank you. And we'll get that meeting scheduled.
And just a suggestion, I guess whoever wants to come, but I think the Main Street group ought to be involved, head of the EDA, if EDA members want to come. I just think it would be a good opportunity to discuss some of the things and report, and hopefully get everybody on the same page as where we can go.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Jeff. The EDA has not gotten to get a study yet. I think they've got some good things in there. And let's let the EDA digest that.
Sure.
Get back with you all, talk a little bit about it with Gary Wilson. And we'll see if the county can support us going forward in the future if it's compelling. That would be...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, the public comments section's open. Please come to the podium. You can address council on any matter that regarding the town, whether it's on the agenda or if it's something that you have a problem with. I will announce here that we have a very full agenda. So as in the meetings past, we would entertain a little bit of comment during the business section of our meeting, but tonight, due to the amount that we have on our agenda, if you have a comment or a question, please do it at this time. Thank you.
Again, my name is Stephen Briggs. I moved here probably just under five years ago now, at 130 Maury. Soon after moving in, then discovered that there was a problem with the sewer, and it resulted in sewage in my basement. This was a matter of weeks before the town realized that there was a problem and got the necessary funding to start this project. With that sewage in my house, it resulted in bills totaling $1,300. And then this project, which resulted in a water line break right in front of my house, resulted in my water meter getting blocked up with sand and debris. So I ended up having to pay a plumber to come out to determine that the issue was not on my end, that it was in fact on the town side. And then it was determined that the meter was bad, and that resulted in another bill totaling almost $100. So I'm looking to get some kind of reimbursement or compensation for this.
If you could submit these bills and documentation so that staff can view it?
Okay. I did submit copies whenever they first happened, but I was not able to attend the meeting, so I don't know what happened to come at that time. I do have them with me today.
Okay, thank you.
Men Lenahan, 120 Maury Avenue. I wanted to go back to sidewalks and just say that our town is really lovely, and there was a lot of energy with the walkabout and things like that. There are lots of people that want to get out and enjoy their neighbors and enjoy the town. And the sidewalk on Milford looks good, good, and in town, looks great. But there's nothing on Maury Avenue. As far as the sidewalks are concerned, they're broken. The ones in front of our house are horrible. There's a ledge that's about this far from the top of the sidewalk to the, to the road, where someone actually twisted their ankle this past Saturday. where someone actually twisted their ankle this past Saturday, um, stepping off. So, as we're looking to make our town safer, I don't know what, who does the sidewalks. And I understand we're talking about a narrow road, um, perhaps we can take it where they already are and help those out, pick it up on the other side, maybe put a crosswalk there painted, and pick it up on the other side, down as far as it can go without interrupting anyone's yards, and then pick it up on the other side, even if we have to zigzag it, um, fix what's there, and then add until you get to the end of the road so that people can really enjoy walking and socializing in our town. Thank you.
Okay, I'll add a quick comment to that. Sidewalks also owned by VDOT, um, and we, I will bring this to their attention, but I will tell you that there was, was a comment previously from VDOT, that VDOT will not address sidewalks on Mari Avenue until people stop parking on them. There, there are areas, some areas where people do park them, and that was their concern, is they're not going to spend money to fix sidewalks and then residents park them. So, we need to do our part also about educating the residents of Mari, hey, stay off of sidewalks if you want to be that thing. But I will, I know that the repair budget for Mari, for sidewalks isn't substantial, but I will make sure it's noted that VDOT, that we want to look at the number of Mari Avenue. So if you, do you see people parking on, kindly ask them not to park on.
Yeah, the other comment, that's, uh, all the secondary roads, and we've been told it's way below the priority list of, of repairs. Did they address that, are we going to recap the, uh, or are they going to recap Mari?
That Mari will be recapped, resurfaced.
They're going to, they're going to resurface that, they're not going to widen the road, they're going to clean it up and resurface it there. It may help a little bit, it's not going to fix the sidewalk problem, but as David mentioned in there, if you widen that road and put sidewalks in, it's going to be, you're going to step out your door, front door, and you can step right out of the street.
I'd like to see it be updated, there, there are sidewalks all throughout, they just some are covered with dirt, some are like, yeah.
What happens if somebody gets hurt on sidewalks? It's, um, it's going to be, be done, but it's, they will have to solve it immediately, so.
Okay.
So, so keep the homeowner's liability up to speed.
So just, I'll, I'll ask, um, staff to direct, uh, the public works guys, maybe to just take a look, if they're covered with dirt, we get them swept off, get them cleaned up as much as we can do, um, in the meantime, and we'll make sure that we, when we speak with David, we'll, we'll get in on the list.
I know, I know.
We do have an ordinance for hidden obstruction of sidewalks that I could start enforcing with David, particularly with the parked vehicles. Well, let's, I'm just telling you that there is an ordinance that you can't be obstructing sidewalks.
Let's, let's give the benefit of a, maybe a door hanger or a flyer in Mari, before we start writing tickets just out of a courtesy, and then, uh, I'd rather, we'll be, we'll have the citizens back here for a different reason, so we don't give them notice, so we're going to do that, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. Lynn, can you, it's my sidewalk committee, I'd be glad to walk through here and do a walk-through with you, and then we can take it from there on.
Wonderful.
And Lauren, listen to VDOT, it's getting longer, Jason, but we add a bike path to Main Street.
Okay, speaking, actually, I do have a, so we submitted some smart scale projects for closing crossovers, and we met with VDOT. Uh, the money for bike paths are actually there, if that's something we want to submit for a smart scale project on the next go-around, um, we just need to address it with them that, hey, this is the area we'd like a bike path, and, um, see if we can get the funding for it. But in the smart scale, the way they prioritize it, bike paths actually...
Yeah, we do have a bike path on Broad of Saturday, partial on Broad of Saturday. But if you put a bike path down Mari, nobody's going to be able to drive on the street or ride a bike, right?
No, but we do have a project that can accommodate that. And even in the, even in the Cardinal group report, that's some of the things that, in building a community, it's important to have that in writing in, you know, so, something we should have.
But, uh, one thing, uh, you know, I applaud all y'all coming out and speaking, you know, this is what we need. Uh, but always remember, if you have a problem, you have a complaint, if you come in here to the office, they will take your complaint down, you'll have a paper trail that will get to us, uh, a way to follow up. Uh, coming in here and telling us, you know, we love to hear, but it could get lost. I'm just saying, if, if you have a problem, they're always open, six, five days a week, uh, Reese, if there's something serious enough, serious enough, the town manager will ask to talk to you. Uh, we want to see everything, you know, safe, you know, that's one, you know, one of my big concerns in the town when I came on, is safety in the town. Speeding, walking, biking, running, you know, but it starts right there, and that's one place, anytime, you don't have to wait till our meeting, you go right in there, and then we can address it.
So, thank you. And I probably don't want to say this in a public meeting, but my cellphone is on my business card. Feel free to let me know. As I stated before, I really did, I do mean that, if, if there's an issue, like Mark said, don't wait 30 days to come to a meeting, let us know, we, we will do our best to address it. Um, I mean, we all live here, we all join Council for the good of the town, not to be detrimental to the town, so if it's something that we can fix, we, we are going to fix it. Um, if it's something that costs a lot of money, we have to really do some figuring how we're going to fix it, but there are ways to solve that, so, um, and there's email, my email's available, um, we just, uh, we, we can respond to that, and that gives us a paper trail also, so, thank you for letting us know. Um, is there anyone else I'd like to address Council on any other matter, if there are public comments, please come to the podium.
This is for the entire Council, this is for Mark Gaines. I was in front of him at the drive-through in the bank, the middle lane the other day, and I drove off with a canister. I've never heard so much horn honking in my life. Who is that, and are they intruding on me? It's a, I made a U-turn in the parking lot and came up beside him and handed the canister and apologized, so I wanted to apologize publicly. I'm too young to be doing stuff like that.
Thank you. Okay, here are no other public comments, we will move on to our staff report and presentation. Uh, the first staff report is the Bowling Green Police Department's report for May. Are there any... Okay, I'm sorry, before we start, please stay right there, we're not going to be long. I just want to let the public know that the next council meeting actually falls on July 4th. Um, the Council's pleasure, Council's pleasure to move that to July 11, which would be the next Thursday that's available. Is that the, is there a motion to move the July to Town Council meeting to July 11?
I'll make that motion, we'll move it, July 4th meeting to July, July 11.
Okay? We have a, we have a... Motion by Mr. Gaines, a second by Ms. Gaines, is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Ballard?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. So, July 11 is when y'all are summoned to be back for the public comment section. Thank you. And feel free to stay for the meeting, feel free to leave if you want to, uh, I mean, it's up to you, so. Okay? Now we're ready. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Council, uh, is there any questions on this report for May, 2019? I've done a few things. I just want to make the comment for the public records that, um, I submitted a, a letter and a form to the Virginia Association of Chiefs of Police, um, they have an award, uh, ceremony coming up, and, uh, I submitted a nomination for our police chief for a lifesaving award. Um, if Council's okay, I'll read this letter real quick, this. Um, "Please accept this correspondence as my official nomination for the Bowling Green Police Department Chief Warner B. Lipscomb III for the lifesaving award. On June 18th, 2018, Chief Lipscomb was on patrol when he encountered a motor vehicle crash at the intersection of Route 301 and Chase here in the town of Bowling Green. While attempting to cross the intersection, a female driver of a 2013 GMC Acadia was struck by an approaching vehicle. The impact of the crash caused substantial damage to the passenger side of the vehicle as well as heavy front-end damage to the approaching vehicle. Both vehicles came to rest on the roadway and remained in contact with each other. A fire started in the engine compartment of the 2013 GMC Acadia. The fire quickly spread to the firewall and front driver's compartment of this vehicle. The female driver was able to exit the vehicle along with her 10-year-old son. Her remaining son, aged two, was entrapped in the vehicle due to the initial impact of the passenger side of the vehicle. Also located in the burning vehicle was a small family dog. Initial attempts by Chief Lipscomb to extricate the child from the vehicle failed. As the flames grew inside the vehicle, smoke began to cover the child. With no fire apparatus on scene, Chief Lipscomb deployed his Asp, Asp baton and attempted to break the window. After several attempts, Chief Lipscomb was successful in breaking the rear cargo window. Chief Lipscomb placing himself in danger, entered the burning vehicle, and was able to cut the seatbelt connected to the child's car seat. The child was removed from the vehicle after suffering only minor injuries. Once the child was extricated, he was informed by the mother that the family dog was still inside. Chief Lipscomb once again entered the burning vehicle and located the dog, which was successfully passed along to the children. Chief Lipscomb's actions that day no doubt saved the lives of, of the minor child and family dog. I urge you to consider Chief Lipscomb for this lifesaving award." Um, that had to be submitted by tomorrow, and I sent that on, uh, earlier this week. Thank you for your...
Kind of a dog.
A black dog, and, um, thank you for that.
Chief, I do have a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
You're asking for Kevlar vests, um, how many Kevlar vests are we looking at, do you know? Do we not have Kevlar vests now for our folks?
Uh, three of them are used, yeah.
Okay. And they're 2,500, 2,800 bucks, please someone there, right?
Uh, they're about eight, nine hundred.
Eight, nine hundred, okay.
Okay. Um, just as a note for the public, um, National Night Out will be August 6th, 2019, and we'll do our same, uh, program out of the program. Here are no other questions?
I do want to call your attention to the packet that was enclosed in our court this month. Um, I have, uh, not only heard complaints about Mari, up on Mari Avenue and Anderson Avenue in the past, but, uh, also here tonight, yeah. I just want to advise Council, members of Council, and, uh, and the community here that, uh, we are apprised of your situation. We have, uh, picked up enforcement, as you said, uh, we are actively experimenting with new ways, uh, of, uh, so many ways that we have the assets to, uh, speed enforcement. So, but we are out there, uh, but I want to call as Council attention to, uh, the packet that was enclosed behind my council report. And, uh, to be quite honest with you, when it, when it came to a speeding complaint, I certainly never had an issue with writing a speeding ticket, but, uh, with this particular complaint and the longevity of the complaint on Mari Avenue, I kind of had to tell a friend, if you will. Um, so I, I reached out to the town of Ashland, and, uh, I was invited with this, uh, well, I was directed to, to, uh, the Residential Traffic Community Program Guide. And I know Mari Avenue was, was what was discussed tonight, but just for future reference, um, and this, I issued a policy suggestion, this, this puts into place a procedure, not so much a policy, but a procedure, in which if you have future speeding complaints, uh, you would have a booklet, or you have a, a manual to go off, uh, to address, uh, future speeding complaints. And in looking at it, it's not just law enforcement related, it's a, it's a community law enforcement, Council and staff collaborative effort in order to curb, um, and it's, it's a phase-focused program, and again, this is, this is just for your, uh, reading pleasure, if you would, uh, for future reference. But what, what is, I guess what has been common practice in the past is complaint of speed, enforcement picks up, to which point the word gets out, and then enforcement does that. So, this is a more formulated effort, uh, to get us, if we need those speed tables, if we need those speed pumps, if we need speed time, and again, it's a, it's a phase-induced, uh, program in which it, uh, your petition, I will write online, there's, there's some formulas of, as far as percentages of, of number of residents that would like to have speed reduction measures implemented. So, that's something, uh, that, uh, when I talked to the town of Ashland, they, and they, they for years, and I, I grew up around the town of Ashland, so, they for years had their certain streets that were prone, or known for increased, uh, speed. And, uh, for years, it was, it was the same philosophy of get a complaint, pick up enforcement. And then I reached out to Henrico County, now Henrico obviously is a little different boat than, than we are because they own their own roads, but, um, because they have their own, uh, traffic injuries, or not, on staff, and they have a, uh, a pretty thick manual on how to be corrected measures, common measures, so, um, Ashland seemed to be a little, little less intrusive, if you would, but this, this gives us, uh, a guideline, so stick the door by, uh, before we, before we get to the, as, as community citizens tell you that they're fed up, um, before we get to that point, there's, there's some things that we can do in the future to kind of curb, uh, speeding issues here in town. And, and again, I know Mari Avenue is a focus of concern, but, uh, Mari Avenue, it's not the only street in Bowling Green that we have an issue with speeding on also, so, uh, getting to all of them kind of presents a problem sometimes, but again, for years, it's put the Band-Aid where, where bleeding is, so to speak, but that formula is, uh, a little vague, so, so, uh, this is just something to think about, and, uh, you can, I'll get back to you, but, or see what happens.
Just, um, I'd ask that if you wouldn't mind looking at drafting something for Bowling Green's name on it, and working with VDOT, to make sure that, that we can, that everything still applies to our streets, and then bring it to our policy committee at some point, we can look at adding this. This is on our documents, it's what I kept basically going, yeah, that's, that's the rule from the law enforcement, anybody that creates a, 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 a... No, it's a, it, exactly, and just, just for the public, just in case you didn't see the packet, there were, um, 108 summons, uh, summons issued last month. So, speeding's being addressed, but as you know, whether we're 24/7 or not, we can't put somebody in every street at every hour of every day, so, you know, Lynn may see one this time, but she may miss one that cheats on, you know, and it looks like everybody is seeing the same speedings over and over, but, uh, we have written more tickets in the last year than we have in a long time.
First month.
We also got the nightly drag races off of, uh, Main Street and, uh, Boss.
Yes, yes, I mean, if there's an issue, bring it to our attention, and we will put the focus on it. The noise violations with some of the younger trucks going through town have been addressed, and it's been curbed for the moment, so...
So I'd make a quick suggestion to the community, if you come back to the office and ask them to do a copy of this Residential Traffic Community Program Guide, it's also got some really great links in the back of that, uh, which might go and take a look at some things. Again, this is for Ashland, uh, but it's got some pretty interesting things in there, but, uh, the, the hyperlinks back in there may be some good information on walking, some stuff on, uh, bike paths, pedestrians, and those kinds of things, so if you want that, take that down, the office will make that available for you.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, I want to, uh, are we just as a citizen, I'd like to say thank you for your job, well done. Chief, I want to, are we just as a citizen, I'd like to say thank you for your job well done. Very proud to have you on board here, watching over our little town.
Thank you. And again, I got a prescription, I got a best adventure figure for my wife open business.
I use her.
Next item on the agenda is our Public Works and Utility Report. Are there any questions, Billy?
Questions?
How we doing with David Street?
Good.
Water and all that, and we're in the straight view. Have you got two lines of pumping on there also as well?
We did. It's, when we had a camera, it kind of looks like a small roller coaster, and it's backing up. I'm having, I'm having a couple of different people look at it.
So Billy, can you give us an update on the project for town, where we are? You had a meeting in the last week, isn't that a lead?
Yeah. Instead of September, they're thinking maybe towards the end of August. Kelvick's gotten a few extra crews here, and it's feasible. But, you know, as long as you don't run into any problems, it's coming along pretty good. It's a little slow on Main Street because of the wires up top.
So we discussed earlier on that there was some change orders, and you realize most of the contingency has anything changed in the last month. Have there been other change orders, or are we capital contingency?
No, everything's the same. I mean, while we had, you know, one percent.
I'm pleased with the dust being held down on Main Street. Thank you.
You're welcome.
They're almost done on Main. We've almost made it to Maury on Main. They're close, they're really close.
They're inching along because all the wires and stuff.
Again, we thank all the citizens for your patience during this time. It's a project that has to get done. The alternative is not good, so dealing with a little bit of inconvenience like dust and traffic issues for a few months to solve a 40-year issue is well worth it. Thank you. Next item is our Events Coordinators Report. Before she gets started, I just want to encourage the public and all of council to purchase tickets to the Wine Festival. It's a great event that showcases our oldest property in town and one of the oldest inhabited properties in the state. So I got my 17, so whoever else wants to buy some, please see the ladies. No, those are mine, so they're not for sale. I purchased those for people, so.
Well, that was my report, so thank you. Just really briefly, Clean Sweep last weekend was very successful. We had a number, we had a record number of participants, we had over 50 yard sales. That did include out-of-town residents that set up here in the town hall, but we had, I think it was 53 sales total. So it was a lot of participation. In the past, we filled two goodwill dump, large box trucks with donations. This year, we filled three. So it was a great opportunity for goodwill, but it was also a great opportunity for Bowling Green residents to purge and get ready for first summer. Finally, as you all know, the Bowling on the Green Virginia Wine Festival is on Saturday. I've been working tirelessly with lots of different people, organizations, volunteer coordination, Public Works, Bowling Green Police Department to make sure that things are ready for Saturday, and we are ready. And it's going to be a great event, and I can't wait. I really want to encourage you all to come out. I specifically, one of the things that we're doing different this year is we are streaming the Belmont State's horse race, which is the final race of the Triple Crown. You all may know some history about Secretariat and his big win at Belmont. And I'm very pleased to announce that the daughter of Penny Tweedy, Kate Tweedy, will be at the event. So please walk up, introduce yourself, she'll be there to answer any questions. She was actually up at the Belmont when Secretariat had its, his big win, and she was with her mother at that time. So it should be a really kind of a neat tie-in to our thoroughbred history here in Bowling Green and in Caroline County. So I want to encourage you all to come. We also, as you know, we have the Frederick Ford Big Band, 20-piece orchestra playing music. We've got the Williamsburg Law Bollers coming out, the Bavarian Chef will be selling food. We've got six wineries this year. We're selling craft beer from Three Notch Brewing Company, and it overall will be a great event. I want to personally thank Jeff Voight for volunteering to handle IT coordination that day. I will be on site, of course, but I'll have, I'll be pulled in a lot of different directions. So it gives me great peace of mind to know that we'll have someone on site that's volunteering his time to make sure that we can all see the race, the horse race. And I also want to thank Councilmember Jean Davis for generously offering to volunteer, which she does every year. I'm very thankful for that, thank you. And finally, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for your big purchase of tickets. We are excited. I will say that the owners of Old Mansion asked me for 50 tickets in advance to sell, and they've sold all of them and asked me for additional tickets yesterday. So the townsfolk are certainly doing their part, and I hope to see members of council at the event. Thank you. Any questions?
And members of council, and again, so we get extra people.
Thank you.
Mr. Seaver, we also encourage the board supervisors to attend the event, too, not just the Bowling Green representatives. Just put that in the record.
Next item on the agenda is the Town Club Treasurer's Monthly Report. Is there any question on the prepared report? Here or not, we'll move on to the Town Manager's Monthly Report.
Mr. Mayor, one thing I'd like to bring to everybody's attention, we did switch over to Gmail suites this week. You all should have received the email asking you to log in. If you use email on your phone, you just need to download the Gmail app and log in the way you normally would. And we're also in the process now of moving all the files off our central file to the cloud base drive that they provide.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
We already voted on number 11, so I guess we need to strike that out of the consent agenda and just do nine and 10.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, including items nine and 10? I'm like a monkey. Okay, is there a second?
A second.
There's a motion in a second of Mr. and Mrs. King. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Valerie? Thank you. Okay, next item is under New Business. Unfinished business, we have nothing on the agenda.
Questions you could ask, I asked a little information last meeting. I don't see direction on here in regard to the drug testing policy.
Mr. McDermott, I did talk with the Town Manager, and I also looked at the policy. You texted me about it. It's in Section 15 of our Personnel Policy Annual. It says that drug testing is required pre-employment, when there's reasonable suspicious suspicion, or on a random basis in positions that are safety sensitive, require a CDL license, or who have consented to the random basis. And then it goes through, it talks about the testing procedures and so on.
So my question is, are we following that policy? Are we randomly drug testing, do we have CDL?
First of all, this is the wrong place to ask the question, to a committee. If you have a question for the committee...
We're not going to ask it in the open session.
Then you need to come to the committee. I'm not required to answer your question here.
I'm not asking, I'm asking Town Manager.
Come to the committee.
No, I asked the Town Manager last time, he responded, so I'm following up with that.
Well, you didn't ask this question last time, you asked the House Manager for safety testing. Yes, we do enforce the drug policies, we do enforce all the policies in the personnel area, and I gladly can answer any questions before meeting that one.
So, Mr. Personnel Director, I'll ask you...
Sir, you don't address me here, please. You address me outside the council or at the committee meeting?
Okay, we'll do that, because I think it's a safety issue for our town to make sure that we're doing the drug policy testing for the CDL drivers and the people that are working in the plant.
Yes, we do not have any CDL drivers as any issues. You've never raised any concerns from it. That's one of the standards, if you witness some behavior or have some consent, have an open door policy. The first time I've heard of it is at that meeting. Of course, we do enforce our policies. So if you have any specific personnel concerns, I am the personnel manager, please turn your attention.
That's why I brought it to your attention this time.
We don't have, okay, we're going to clarify this. The policy is being enforced by the personnel manager, which is the Town Manager. He stated that, he is also stating that based off the policy, if there's any direct concerns, any signs of the issues or any issues regarding what is stated in that policy that's not being met, then yes, he is enforcing that policy. We are not just randomly drug testing our employees without suspicion because it's not stated in our policy meeting that we need to. So... That's not a CDL-required control. Is it, Reese?
And again, the appropriate place, if you have personnel concerns, are either come speak to the personnel officer or request a closed session meeting.
Yeah, I'm not asking direct for personnel questions, I'm asking policy questions, and you did not have an answer last time.
You didn't ask the question about whether we had a drug policy.
Mr. American, you can just like a control, please. Mark, let me...
I'm trying to.
And I'm trying to get in a conversation here. The question was asked tonight, are we enforcing our policy? The answer, the question was answered. If you have a personnel question regarding any personnel, we will discuss that in the proper manner regarding the personnel. If you have a concern with the performance of the Town Manager enforcing that policy, we will discuss that in closed session. Any performance-based issues, whether it's from the Town Manager to council to town staff, will be addressed in the appropriate manner. So if you have a concern about the performance of the Town Manager and him enforcing policies that are written, or you have a question about the way the policy's worded, it should be directed to the Personnel Committee and Legal Council. We have got a, we've got a ruling that we don't have to do random drug testing unless we have suspicion. We will address, we will review that, and we will get a second clarification in writing that we're okay.
Okay, I can, I can say it and now end it. We have suspicion-based testing, and we also, for safety-sensitive positions, have a policy that allows random drug testing. So for example, if you have a law enforcement officer for whom driving is an integral part of the job, that would be a safety-sensitive position where you could do a random drug test. For Melissa, if you want a drug test, Melissa, you would need to have some suspicion, and I'm just picking on you, I'm sorry, that she was engaging in drug or alcoholism.
So how about the, I always want a treatment plan? Would that be a safety issue?
It would depend on what individual you're looking at, what the requirements of their job are. It gets, it gets very specific.
We can have random, pop, random drug testing, correct?
For safety-sensitive positions.
Correct, so there is a policy that we can have.
Yes.
And the other is, is that we need to make sure that those policies are followed. That's the only question I have for the time being, are we following the policies? To answer what City wants to have a policy. So that's why I asked for your attention.
That is not true, and I asked you repeatedly not to say that. You didn't ask if I was enforcing drug policy. You asked me if I was enforcing some state mandatory testing policy that I didn't hear of, didn't know of, because it didn't exist, and it was referred to the Town Attorney to research that. I brought it to her attention the very next day, that what we did have was a random drug testing policy in our personnel manual. I certainly know about this. You certainly should know about it because you were the chairman of the Personnel Committee, witness policy was passed.
That's why I asked a question about it, and I didn't get a fair response from you. That's why I saw a follow-up.
I would respectfully request you ask me before or after the meeting.
Yes, and I agree that the question that was asked last month is different than the question that was asked this month.
You know that for sure?
If you go back and listen to the recording, there was a question asked regarding the, regarding the state, the state code, is there, are we following the drug policy in the state code the way it's listed?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, can we do this in private?
Yeah, we're done with this discussion.
Thank you, let's move on.
If we, and I will state this last comment, is if there is a suspicion or there's a reason that this policy has been handpicked and brought up for discussion because we think we may have an issue, please bring that to our attention, and we will, we will address that with that individual, but it's got to be done in the proper manner. So just, that's it.
No problem, thank you.
We, we have to work together as a council. We, with staff, we're not here on a witch hunt to call out staff in a public meeting. There's times that we can ask questions, I'm not addressing, addressing it just to you, Ms. McGee, I'm addressing it to all of council. And I have stated this before, that if you have a question for staff, please, out of courtesy, that they don't have everything sitting in front of them, they don't have the county codebook at a meeting every day. Ask the question beforehand, give our staff the courtesy to prepare you an educated answer that night instead of showing up, holding a question until the night of the meeting, and then blasting or surprising staff and they can't give us a proper answer. I'm not saying that we don't want to, we're hiding it from the citizens. What I'm saying is, give them time to prepare, come to the, still ask your question, but we have to work together. We have a great staff, we have a great council, and I just, I don't want any one person, staff or council, going on witch hunts that may not want a witch hunt. I'm just, hold on, I have, I have the floor, just, I'm just making a comment because I don't want anyone from the public or council to get the appearance that we're attacking staff or staff's attacking us. I just want to throw that out there, that we're all adults here. If you have any question, give staff time to prepare a proper answer, and then ask the question also in the public meeting, so the public is aware that you asked a question. It's only fair.
No problem.
All right, next item on the agenda is New Business, the adoption of FY 2019, 2020 fiscal plan. We did not do that. We went back to unfinished business, which was the drug policy. Would that be, actually, no, this is the, but, this is the actual. Okay, so next item is proposed budget rate for FY 2020. Were developed in conjunction with Budget Committee and reviewed by the entire Town Council at its March 21st, 2019 work session. Changes made since the work session include a well-hit... Changes made since the work session include a well-hit protection grant from the Virginia Department of Health, reallocation of staff salaries based on reevaluation of program needs, adjustments to insurance costs based upon the final rates received from insurers, and raises for the next mayor and council members. The budget was duly advertised and council held a public hearing on proposed fiscal plan on May 2nd, 2019. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution 2019 dash zero zero three? Two zero zero three, uh, zero zero three.
Yes, I make a motion that we adopt this budget, which I'm wanting to.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2019 dash zero zero three. Is there any further discussion? Here none, we will do a roll call vote. Ballard? Okay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is appropriation resolution R. 2019 zero zero four. This is a, appropriation of funds for the adopted FY 2019-2020 budget for July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2020, and reappropriation of certain FY 2018-2019 funds. Layman's terms, this, the budget's been approved, this allows us to spend money, as we do. So, is there a motion to approve resolution 2019 dash zero zero four for the appropriation of adopted FY nineteen operating budget and reappropriation of certain FY 2018-2019?
I make a motion.
We have a motion by the chairman.
I second it.
Second, and it's how. Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote.
Yes, yes, yes.
Ballard? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is the resolution 2019 dash zero zero six. This resolution is to increase the council member's annual pay from $1,200 to $1,800. Is there a motion to approve adopted, uh, to adopt resolution R. 2019 dash zero zero six?
I make the motion that we adopt R. two zero one, number zero six.
Okay, there's a motion, and there's a second. Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote, you start the standing.
Yes, let's go.
Stone? I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Ballard?
Yes.
Okay, just, for purposes of the standing, just state your reasons for standing.
As I'm figuring it out.
Okay, thank you. Not calling, just, or the process for standing. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is request for appropriation of unassigned funds. Request for $5,000 from the events and activities unassigned fund balance to cover wine festival expenses. The unassigned fund balance for events and activities is approximately $12,600. This amount is, is an accumulation of net revenues of events of the past several years. Is there a motion to reappropriate the unassigned funds? Or request for appropriation of unassigned funds to be able to spend the $5,000 necessary?
So, is that a question, I guess, I'm not clear on Washington's topic.
Well, once we get a- I'll make a, I'll make the motion, we'll do the discussion. I'll make the motion that we approve the request for unassigned funds for the events.
I'll second, oh, I didn't even ask the question. Is this a typical that we've done in the past, or is doing this in the past, or the upfront, is this upfront expenses that she needs to get the, that done?
I believe that usually we have a budget item for that, and this year we put the funds in the unassigned, and we're actually-
In 2018, we actually ended up having two wine festivals. So, one in July, which was the very beginning of FY 18, and then we had one in June, we moved it up. So, we ended up having two wine festivals on one wine festival budget. And because it was so late in June, it was probably expenses not being paid until July, so it used up for wine festival budget for the three-year-old wine festival in FY 19. So, instead of doing this again and using FY 20's wine festival money for the FY 19 wine festival, we're gonna be, we're just asking for the money so that we make it straight now, and we don't keep this game of chasing our own futures.
And it all stems from us realizing that July 4th weekend is not the best time to have a wine festival, for heat and traveling purposes, so we moved it.
Okay, good, our question, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Ballard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is new job descriptions and pay ranges. Job descriptions and pay ranges were developed in concert with the Personnel and Budget Committee. The proposed budget was prepared based upon these proposed ranges. Attached to the proposed job description and proposed pay ranges, basically, as you all know, we've been, we had to create a position for the economic development coordinator, and that split, and then we were cleaning up our previous job descriptions, so that we had a documented and proper requirements of the position and the expectation of the position, so we have the events coordinator, economic development coordinator, the waste water treatment plan training of the two that we were updating this month. Is there a motion to approve the new job description and proposed pay ranges based off of the recommendation of the Personnel and Budget Committee?
Yes, I make a motion that we approve this.
Then I'll second it.
And we have a second about this. Is there any further discussion?
I think that kind of a question, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, on the economic development coordinator position, I think you're also doing an incredible job moving the board and doing a lot of work by the EDA and the county in general, so I'm very pleased with the effort that she's put forth and the results. I do have a question on, are there certificates or certifications that she would need to move forward on educational-wise that would make her grow a little bit, give her some opportunities to have some certification, case she lost somewhere or did something else in the classes that we would recommend that she take?
Yes, there is. Yes, there is, there's, you can get a expense certification, it's composed of five different courses that they sponsor throughout the country periodically, starts out with basic industrial development, I took that one, and then there's four other ones, and then there's a capstone test of comprehensive knowledge, and if she got into this position, we would together a professional development program, go through that certification.
Yeah, I think the amount of money we invested in her, it would certainly, who were to have that and grow and have a more deeper understanding, she has a great understanding of marketing and relationships and networking, but I think she needed some substantial base knowledge of EDAs and the investment in that would be appropriate.
Yep, well, certainly, it's addressed that personally.
Okay, we have a motion, a properly second motion on the floor to approve the job descriptions at hand. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Ballard?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. I will say this is the first time I've had a two-page agenda. Item seventeen on our agenda is a personal policy exemption. Background summary of this, Joel Sa Jordan for the past five years has, on a contract basis, been handling, handling the town's events, social media, and press relations, and more recently serving as the EDA secretary. Since many of these duties overlap with the newly created economic development coordinator, the town manager is requesting an exemption from the town's normal recruitment process, and that he be allowed to hire Joel Sa Jordan as the town's economic development coordinator. The requested action is approve the town manager's hiring of Joel Sa Jordan as the town's economic development coordinator without going through the normal recruitment process outlined in the personnel policy manual. Is there a motion? Another motion by Mr. McDermott, is there a second? Second by Ms. Howard, any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, raise your right hand. Ballard?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Next item on the agenda, we will have a brief discussion, but we, I'll let the town manager inform you of what the actions we are gonna do with the AS400.
We're gonna withdraw this request we received yesterday, the new information from the current vendor of the AS400, and what they do charges, and then substantially reduce our charges, or we could either guide machine for the upfront cost that the county's offering and paying roughly $200 a month, or pay a lease payment for two years of $150 plus the $200, those are substantially less than the $4,000 and $700 a month. We didn't, we didn't have that information from at that time, plus this request came in a couple hundred dollars in upfront fees, more than initially discussed, so at this time, we want to withdraw this.
Good. I'd also just like to publicly thank the county for offering to share this software with us, it's nice when we can work together, somehow or another, the same vendor gives a cheaper rate if we didn't work together, but we'll still, you know, work together as best we can, so, not sure how that worked out, but as you know, if we can save a dollar, we're gonna save a dollar, so, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a report of council members committees and comments. Number nineteen is the budget policy personnel and ordinance committee, the town manager's search. I will refer to Mark Ince, the chair of the committee, for the personnel committee.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, it was raised up at the last meeting, something about hiring a new town manager, maybe getting on it kinda early. So, we had a meeting, we came up with, next in July meeting, Personnel Committee would come back with three options, including a timeframe for council to consider. First one is, we would do an integral successor, in other words, somebody from within side, you know, already here. Hiring a recruiting firm, which they can get expensive, but hiring an outside firm that will handle the law for us, and then they will filter to us the most qualified recipients, and also they know who's out there, and we can even go out of state with this. And then do an in-house council search committee, where we do our own, we advertise our own, and then, you know, bring them in that way. So, those are the three options, and like I said, we'll bring it back to you in July for consideration and the timeframe mark.
Okay, with that being stated, that, we talked about it last month, and I spoke with Mr. McDermott at the last meeting, that if he would like to serve, that committee, if that's the option, we'd go with the in-house search committee, we would fill them with separate committee outside the personnel committee.
I really don't see a reason why the personnel committee can't handle it like it is, but, I mean, that's just our opinion.
Okay, well, that may not, we'll address that in July, that may not even be the option that's-
Right, okay.
So, in a game. Next item, next item on the agenda is item twenty. It's information only, the budget policy personnel ordinance committee has met and discussed the future of food trucks in town. And they will come back with a policy or recommendation on how to handle food trucks in town.
Right, well, you know, bring it back, I don't know when, next month and the month after, just, everybody started thinking, I don't wanna handle that, because we don't have many restaurants in here, and they struggle, so why would we wanna bring vendors from outside to take away from them? It'd be the same thing if you had a, you got a dog groomer in town, all of a sudden you got a mobile dog getting coming in here to, you know, setting up on Main Street or something. I mean, it could affect anybody, so it's just something to think about, you know, and we'll bring it back to you later on.
Yeah, it's one of those catch twenty-two's, it's, if the vendor is already a vendor that is in town, you know, you may suffer, if we had a Mexican food truck coming, Mexican restaurant, suffer, but if it's a food truck that's not already located in town, that we may not capture that audience before, now we would capture that audience and maybe gain sales tax. So, maybe we need to just look at some other localities or how they handle that too, smaller localities.
Yeah, I know, uh-
And our meeting, I think it was also discussed that maybe we just need to regulate a little better.
Yes.
Because when you look at the example, I use the mixed house, they started out as a food truck, you know, and they're now a local business, so I feel like we just need to think about how we wanna regulate that, and we're open to the suggestions.
Yeah, it's not about the sales tax for the town as much as it is keeping whoever's renting in town and paying our taxes and paying rent and paying water sewer, I mean, keeping them in business, we're having a hard time with that now.
Yeah, no, I understand, what I meant going is, if that person wasn't gonna eat at that restaurant, because, to begin with, they're not gonna eat with it whether we have a food truck. I stated earlier in the meeting, so we'll talk after the meeting, please. I just don't wanna go against my word that I-
It's a general assembly law.
Yeah, we'll talk about that right after the meeting. Informational items, item fifty-one, we've got eleven here. Oh, that's it, it's the town attorney.
So, Reese and Melissa and I have been diligently working week by week on updating the code. We started with the zoning chapter, because those changes will need to go to the planning commission for a public hearing before they can come to us, so we wanted to do that first so that when we get the rest of the code together, you know, we'll, we won't have to wait on the zoning part. I would ask for time at the July or August meeting to go through some of those provisions and just kind of make sure that what we're doing is what council wants us to do. We have been warned.
Next item on the agenda, for informational purposes, I spoke with VDOT in regards to the additional $200 fine for speeding on Main Street, we just need to get a resolution prepared from the town. I know how ordinance prepared to vote on that, and we can do that based off the speed study that we used a couple years ago for the speed sign. So, we did get approval that we don't have to have an additional speed study on Main Street. So, once we get this ordinance written and added for Main Street, and we get the speed study back from Maury, we will approach VDOT about adding Maury under that, excuse me.
Street specific.
The street specific.
I'm assuming you're directing the draft.
Yes, I'm directing you to draft the words. Thank you. All righty. Any other council committee, council committee or comments from any council?
I have none.
I attended a county's business appreciation, it was very nice, and also, we did the AVE Hill, and Sandy Graham, and the Joe X, and that was very nice.
Good, and we also, I know- Good, and we also, I know I saw Jean and Mark and Tammy and Lynn at the Memorial Day service, and that was a very good service, thank you both. It was my first, and I really enjoyed it, it was very nice, very nice, thank you.
Hi, um, we, the Planning Commission's meeting, um, well, I'm afraid it's still on vacation on May 20th, but it's here at all, and we have already gone through the first six chapters of the Conference of Plans, and have done discussion, and, um, will be continuing the next six chapters at our next meeting, however, we will also be doing a joint meeting with the EDA and the Planning Commission, as there are questions, I think, of overlap, or, I think I, what exactly the Planning Commission does, I think people need to understand that. Uh, I think that's what we are gonna be discussing, just an understanding of what EDA and Planning Commission actually does.
Thank you. Come on. The only other item I have is, we had a council member celebrate a birthday yesterday, so we have a card, "Happy Birthday." I'll let you say if you'd like, how many years? Something like thirty-nine, thirty-nine years old?
A little bit, uh, are we gonna sing?
Oh, we can sing, I mean, actually, I'll, I'm not singing by myself, but we can, I will entertain singing "Happy Birthday," and I'll start it.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday to Jean, happy birthday to you.
And many more?
Thank you, many more. All righty, well, with that being said, uh, we have a closed session on the agenda in accordance with section two dot two, day three seven one one, A1 of the Code of Virginia. Is there a motion that the town council convening in closed meeting to consider a personnel matter involving the appointment of an individual to the Economic Development Authority? Is there a motion as written?
I make a motion.
Okay, we have that motion, is there a second? We have a second, any discussion? Here none, all in favor, raise your right hand. And Valerie, um, I guess we'll.
Can she participate?
Okay, okay, Valerie, you can stay on if you'd like for the closed session, or we'll.
Okay.
Okay, all right, well, at this time, we're gonna take a quick five-minute break, um, and we'll reconvene here very soon.
If each of you would certify, ISO certified.
ISO certified. I see certified.
Valerie?
ISO certified.
Thank you.
Okay, um, coming out of closed session, um, is it the direction of council that I add to the agenda for the July meeting, uh, set a time to invite these two applicants to come, give us their background and then, and their reason for wanting to go in again?
Yes.
And at the end of that meeting, we'll have a closed session to, go ahead and have the same conversation, and then we cannot make a decision if you'd like. Is that the goal of council?
Yes.
Okay.
We're gonna invite them in on closed session, or are we gonna?
No, we, no, we'll let them have it in the public session.
It sounds like you said.
Valerie? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Valerie?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Valerie, enjoy your vacation.